Good evening, everyone. This is Robert Stevenson. It is 6:00 P. M. I'd like to open our regular meeting for the Southwood Collin Granville Regional School District School Committee. Can I get a motion entered in the meeting? Can I get a show of hands entered in the meeting? Aaron, let the record show the motion passed 6:00:00 and we got people in the crowd that are okaying the entry of the meeting. I love the participation. I saw that on my first. All right, can I get everybody please stand for the public allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have our consent agenda. We've got a little wrinkle with that. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to see the, been a couple late admissions for fundraisers that I asked Aaron to put through because if we didn't put them through tonight, they would be pretty much a waste of time because the sports season was just over, but then we met again. So if anybody doesn't have any issues, we're gonna, we're gonna include those in the consent agenda. This is your speaking hour for a moment. All right. We'll move forward with that. We have some warrants going around that I need everyone to just sign off on. If you can do that, that would be great. Superintendent Willard, we have any correspondence?
I do. The only thing I just wanted to share was we did receive a recent email letting us know that the OSD, which last year went up fourteen, over fourteen percent for the added district special education placements. They're anticipating an increase this year of about four point six and nine. So as we start planning the budget season, I just wanted to put out that, that out there as early as possible, for ones aware.
Yay, four percent on top of the fourteen. That's super good. All right, public comment. Coming to our first public comment section, anybody would like to make a public comment, just please raise your hand. You'll need to give me your name and your address. And then we just need to make sure that the comments are appropriate and not disparaging towards any employees at the school district. Do we have anybody for public comment? Fantastic. It's chatting. All right, more on the page. Student advisory report. We have two.
Two.
We are full, we are a full complement. Magnolia is here, Lucas is here. Take it away, guys.
Sure, I will. Well, it's been actually a rather quiet two weeks at the school. First of all, we have the NHS induction on the twenty-fourth next week. So pretty exciting all around. We also, the parking spots finished, was it last weekend or the weekend before? I think it was the weekend before. And I don't have an exact number, but I believe it was in the thirties by the end of people who were interested and people who didn't. So they came out very well and we're very happy with how it came. And also, posing on the midterms, not exciting, but it is worth touching upon.
We have USAT tomorrow on poker ticket sales. Looks like they're going well and sports teams are definitely going well before it comes out, but do that.
Fantastic. You guys remind me of the, from the new Spider-Man movies where they have the little two people that are doing the news for the you guys reminded me of tonight. So they want to record these and put them up at the school.
Do we get to see pictures of the parking spaces?
I can get some and bring them next to you. Yeah.
A great idea. All right, Superintendent Willard, we got a couple presentations tonight.
I get to do the first one. I love doing this one every year. I'm up in a minute to say, let everybody know. So every year, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, which I'm a part of, they created a award. It's called the Certificate of Academic Excellence. And I get to give it out to the senior who has consistently distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school which means they're at the top, typically top of their class. This year, it's going to Scarlett Sebastian, SRS class of twenty twenty-four. They give it now so that when she's applying to colleges, she can put it on her college applications. Scarlett has demonstrated excellence in academics and extracurricular activities for use. But most important thing that I read about, and I'm so impressed, is she is a competitive dancer who spends ten to fifteen hours per week at a dance studio that's outside of school. That's what effort she puts into her dancing. She has received accolades for dance at a regional and national level. She earned the American Dance Awards Junior National Title in two thousand nineteen, and she placed in the top fifteen at the American Dance Awards Teen Dancer of the Year competition in two thousand twenty-two. So I'm very pleased to issue Scarlett Sebastian the Certificate of Academic Excellence for the twenty twenty-four school year. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Sure for the Facebook. Anybody have a phone number?
Yeah. Yes.
I get to stand next to a dancer, you know.
Give the congratulations.
You get an extra award.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You should be proud as parents.
Oh, yeah, we are.
Congratulations.
Joyce on your ear.
Yes.
Now she's gotta do midterm, right?
Oh, yeah.
One thing I don't bring it right back down. And be wise for award, now get back in there. Welcome to life. Gonna take this on the road, buddy. I'm telling you. A week.
A week, that's what I mean, yeah. For somebody working all spring.
A lot of the academic, the athletic students do that all the time. Good. All right. The shorter. You have something for us tonight? Don't, don't, don't sound so excited.
Are you excited?
Well, from you, normally, yeah, we like the data. You gotta beat Aaron's. Aaron's is always very colorful.
Quite as colorful. So one of the, to, to get started, one of the things I'd like to highlight is, is that, which is not the school accountability, overall, our accountability, it's, it's a combination of multiple factors. It's not just MCAS data. MCAS data is a, is a weighting portion of it, but it takes into account attendance, the rigor of your course offerings. When you're in middle high school, it also takes into account your middle school data. Although seventh grade data, I believe, is not really part of the accountability because a class needs to be in your school for two years to count toward accountability, even if it's in the same district. So there's a myriad factors that weigh into accountability, but, but the piece that's, that's really significant is that self-residential school has earned accountability in the seventieth percentile, which is compared to twenty nineteen for forty-two.
Whoa.
So that is, that is significant.
Yeah.
And twenty nineteen is the last time, I believe, that they, that they put out accountability. So, so that's significant.
So seventy percent has exactly that. The top seventy, like, what does that mean?
It means that we have made seventy percent, that we've achieved seventy percent of our goals. Or, or seventy percent.
You're in the seventieth percentile of the rank.
Of the ranking, okay. We made forty-nine percent growth for our goals. We've been, we've had this.
Is it, is it forty-nine?
It's forty-nine.
Yeah. So they said, they, they, the accountability, they set a, a score for you. A target. And it, as Mr. Short said, it's based on not just achievement, but numbers since you graduated, numbers since you graduated five years and four years, attendants, numbers when he's taking advanced courses, all, all of it. And so our achievement is in the seventieth percentile. Our growth towards our achievement is, is right in the middle at forty-nine percent.
So we've got half of our stuff left to do, and we're already at seventy, at the seventieth.
Well, it's, it's moving targets.
No, no, understood. But that's, by no means, this is not a insignificant increase over the last three years, four years.
It should be amended.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a huge jump. That's.
And so that puts us in a category, that, that, each of the, there's four categories, and the category that would, would put us in is does not require assistance or intervention. And that's where you want to be. You want to not acquire. There is an exceeding category, but it's
What do we gotta be to get exceed?
I don't know because it's a moving target.
Oh, so that's our next one.
You can get, you can get exceeding in the growth and not in the, not in the achievement percentile.
Right, like if you look at, same thing is true with, like with your own kids.
Yep. Yeah. I think I'd rather have the exceeding in the overall percentile. Not necessarily the growth that we've got, because as long as you keep growing, that's great.
Well, and if, and so I, I dug in, you know, kind of following up with Mrs. Carrier last week, when she showed you the beautiful listing of comparable schools and highlighted, it was a little trickier to do that for our school. But I, I did, I did compare us to other middle high schools in Massachusetts, because that's a distinction that's unique to us. And we are better than fifty-seven percent of middle high schools in Massachusetts. We're, we shouldn't say we're better, we're doing, we're performing better than fifty-seven percent of schools that aren't like us. Many of them aren't near us, so that's why.
Palmer, Hampshire, those, those would be middle high schools, right?
Um, Gateway.
Gateway.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
All the factors that they consider that, that make us the same, I don't know if they all have the same grade configuration. Some of them are sixth through twelve, not so over twelve. So there's minutia that or less comparable has. But the data point that, that I got was the fifty-seven percent, which I
Have we ever been this high?
I don't know. Well, the accountability is, is system is new. Of, that can be part of our new work. So, but yes, seventy percent is high.
Well, that's awesome.
So tonight, I'm gonna, we're gonna look at, at some of the MCAS data for ten, eighth and seven. And we're gonna after, do some highlights of the A E data from this year. We did not include our iReady diagnostic. We, we use the iReady to dig into the skills as part of intervention, but it's not, we don't look at it as part of our overall performance. We look at it as real time, what do we need to do next relative to student skill. In some areas, I'm gonna highlight the tenth grade, because we also, at this stage, as we get closer to that tenth grade test, start using the seventh and eighth grade data to really look at where do we need to intervene or what are our needs at school so that students are all meeting expectations on that tenth grade assessment. Because as you know, the tenth grade assessment is, is necessary, meeting expectation is necessary to receive a diploma. So that becomes, that becomes serious target as we're looking at what we're gonna do based on student's data. So I, I did two charts, depending on what kind of learner you are, if you like the visual versus if you like the numbers. So the first one was a bar graph, and the second one is this percentages graph for ELA and CAS in tenth, eighth and seventh. At every grade level, we have fewer not meeting students than the state, which were, were significantly fewer. And we also have fewer exceeding, but we're closer at, at some levels. So I think that's good news.
Is there a quick question for you? There's a significant change between seventh and eighth, if we look at the percentage of the kids either partially or not meeting. And then what we've got at tenth grade, we're only forty-two percent at the tenth grade, but we are fifty-seven, fifty-seven at seventh and eighth. Is there any sort of, there's a significantly more higher amount of kids in the tenth grade that are at least meeting the expectations than we are? Oh, it's an easier test.
Yeah, and like I said, we, we look at what's happening in seventh and eighth grade and intervene to improve the performance for tenth grade.
Okay.
So this is a place where we can narrow.
So this makes exactly what we expect to see.
Exactly, exactly. Would expect a better scores in tenth grade. What you'll see through all the data is this shifting or this dance between meeting and partially meeting expectations. You know, we, we move students, students are moving, are dancing in and out of those two places, which is okay in terms of it's okay, we really want everyone meeting all the expectations. Not meeting is in red for a reason. That's where, that's where we don't want anybody. So that's a, that's a primary.
Well, I mean, having four percent is probably everybody, because you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to get to zero.
Right, in a school with the numbers that we have at each grade level, four percent could just be a couple of students.
Right.
Four, right?
Yeah, about, about. So that's important to know. So if you could flip to the next.
Sure.
Oh, we're out.
Sorry.
There we go. So includedness for tenth grade, this is an item analysis graph, and what it just shows is, so the, the magenta is where this, is the state and the blue is where and the blue is how Southwood performed on each of the questions. And so just to give you an understanding of what we do with this data, the, the teachers will really use this to look at where we're hot, where we're achieving high, but also where we, with the areas that we need to work on. And so in terms of our ELA data, we look at ideal development and language conventions as areas that we need to make some improvements on, but we're, we're doing really well relative to the state in terms of character analysis and, and identifying purpose, and identifying purpose in multiple kinds of articles and writings. So just an example of how we drill down the data a little bit more. And then in real time, and for individual students, we will utilize iReady data to see where students relative to these, to these skills, how they're performing.
So you've only got a third of those points that are below the state average, or two-thirds that are above. I know, I know the dreaded teach to the test mantra, but this gives you an opportunity to really be able to focus in on those things that, that our kids are struggling on. The nice thing is, it's only a third of the test.
Right, so when you look at that bigger score, what is it, what is it telling where? So we're not, we're not guessing. We know, we know where.
It's the item analysis, and then when you break it down by standards, that's really helpful to.
And I'm assuming there's probably a bunch of, like, out of those nine items that are below the state, it wouldn't be too farfetched to say that some of those are probably grouped in the same, from the same section, right? That if they're gonna struggle with one, there may be multiple questions in that section.
An interesting piece that we, we dug into last year and, and we're, we're going to continue to work on is that one of the things is not necessarily that students can't do the skill, but that they may not be interpreting the directions correctly. And that's something that's come across, and that's come across statewide as, as an issue to address. So when we say narrative writing, what does that actually mean? In a classroom, when you're teaching it, you might say it once, but not continue to say it, and students just know this is what we're doing today. But then they're alone with the directions. They see the word narrative writing, they misinterpret that to something else. They may be doing something. So, so we're looking at that and addressing that as part of our intervention or our focus in addition to.
Also, in a classroom, in a teaching situation, you can say we're doing narrative writing today, and then you can use a whole bunch of other words that mean the same thing so that the kids can get it. Whereas when they're taking the MCAS, you can't paraphrase directions for that at all.
But I mean, that's a challenge that kids have. I mean, you look at, even as they get older, they go to college and graduate, they're doing their licensing exam. If you've got kids that are struggling on these exams, that they need nursing, therapy, all this stuff, where they run into trouble, is they don't, they get caught where the question's confusing. And if we could get them early, where they can understand how to dissect that, that will help them tremendously as they go on.
So here's our math comparison data, and this is, this is the bar graph, so the state is all in gray and our color. We are right at the state in terms of exceeding. We're at fifty percent. We're trailing with not meeting particularly in eighth grade and, and seventh grade seems to be the same, thirty-nine percent where we are. If you could flip to the next one, that's, this one has our numbers. So eighth grade is where we need to place some focus in terms of students out, I mean, seventh grade as well. We have some students to move out of. But that will give us a target and, to grow toward that. So here's our item analysis for tenth grade math. So it's a little bit it plays the above and below a little bit more than, than the ELA. This item analysis shows that our skills to focus on are equivalent polynomial expressions, which was interesting to me when I was looking at this. I've heard that doing walkthroughs and being in math classes, I've heard that teachers already recognize that as something that, that we need to address. And triangle sum theorem is something we're doing really well in. So in case you wonder what those. So if you flip ahead, our next one is science. And as you know, or as you may know, we, in, in, for the tenth grade test or the competency determination, students take all the ninth grade students take physics, and then some students take biology if they enter our school as tenth graders. If they don't meet expectations on the physics, they don't take the biology. The students will continue to take the science test until they have a meeting expectations, but there's multiple opportunities to do it in multiple tests. The data lumps it all together in terms of science, in terms of science. So we don't have a breakdown of which of these were physics and which of these were biology. We just have the breakdown of how our students performed last year in science. We do, as you can see, the partially meeting where most of our students are living in partially meeting, so we have some work to do in terms of shifting to the meeting expectations. And it is important to note that this test is the newest next generation MCAS test. So this assessment, this data is from a new test that students are taking.
Oh, but there'll be a new, new.
And now there is a, there is another one. So to compare this to twenty nineteen, it wasn't the same test, so there really isn't. So if we, I, I'm looking at this as we're at the beginning, and so we'll go from this.
Sure. Go ahead.
So where I'm seeing a bit of a concern though, is that if you look at eighth grade and then eighth grade to high school, we're looking at a different pattern than we were seeing in math and ELA. In math and ELA, we were seeing improvements as we went from middle school to high school. Here we're not.
Right, which in part, I think it, in part, the, the tests. Mr. Tremont, can you correct me? Did, when, which test became next generation first? But I believe it was so they've been doing next gen longer than, than the high school test. The other pieces, I, I'm not clear on, we have to do an item analysis on this to see what the focus of that eighth grade test is, and those high school tests are content specific. Bio, and so if you had a strength in in, in the biology segment, but then, then you took the physics. So there is, there's a correlation because it's science.
Yes, except that eighth grade test is cumulative over six, seven and eighth grade. Whereas that test is after one course, so you would think the opposite would be true.
I would agree. So we need to dig into this.
So I know the other thing that we've changed, I'll say recently, last couple of years. Everybody going into tenth grade used to take bio first. And then we made a conscious decision to switch it to physics. And I've got feedback from my own child that graduated a couple of years ago, that is that the right move that we made? Like, are, are our kids when they're in the physics that early, do they have the math background and the math like structure in order to succeed in that? Where bio, it, it's, it's, it's not gonna have that, that it's building on. It's biology. You're learning, you're studying, you're taking a test. With physics, if you don't have a good base in math, you're gonna have problems in physics. So is it worth relooking at whether we're taking the wrong course, or whether the tenth graders are taking the wrong study at tenth grade? When they, when they may not have the math?
I'm gonna answer this for Mr. Short because it's not.
No, no, I.
The data does not hurt us to defend. I have to defend this data. We made the decision six, seven years ago to go from biology to do physics. And the rationale behind it was we felt, not we felt, we, we studied that there were a, a number of more standards in biology than there were in physics. And that the scope of the biology test, given the amount of standards, was overwhelming for students. And we thought the number of standards in physics being less, that, that the teachers and the students could focus on X number of standards versus Y number of standards.
Okay, I understand that, but based on the question, that may not have been.
So I'm gonna get to, the, the second part of your question was, are our students prepared for math? It will, for the physics with the math part of it. Four years ago, we had, we did a, a study of where we had a physics teacher who was very much focused on the conceptual part of physics and a physics teacher who was very much focused on the math component of physics. And we compared their MCAS scores, and they were dead even.
Okay.
There was, there was no, the, 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 the physics teacher that focused heavily on the math component, their students did not do significantly or notably better in the achievement of physics than, than our teacher that focused on the, the conceptual physics, science part of it.
Okay. Still doesn't, still, my question is, are they, are they, because here's the thing, I'm not saying even at the physics level. The question is, is the tenth grade the right grade for them to do physics? Because even if the teacher concentrates on the math or doesn't concentrate on the math, that's not the factor that I'm looking at. Do they go into that class with enough structure that they've had in math to be able to succeed with it? Because if they have it later, and they've got another year of math in tenth grade, and then they go into physics.
I think you're asking the wrong question, Rob.
Okay.
I think that truthfully, this, that year might have been the first year that they took the next gen version of the physics test. This, this year's data right there. Yeah, and I think that the first question to be asking is, okay, what does this test look like? How does this test look different from past tests? Okay? And is our curriculum best supporting what this test is, is asking? The, the, the standards that are being addressed. I think that's the first question that needs to be asked because this is a a different version.
Physics is not.
So some other truth is, doing physics in ninth grade does allow students to, that's the only test they're taking as, as ninth graders, as opposed to when they go to tenth, they're taking English and math also, which are the high stakes, the high stakes test. This is, this, was it this year? We started doing it in February as well.
It's another point.
It's the timing that, prior years, everyone had to take it in June. Now we, it's offered in February and in June. So a student taking a fall semester of science can take their test in February.
But we would have hoped.
Would have hoped for.
Better, then they would have had to hold class, right? Before the test.
So far away from the time that.
Exactly, right. If you took your first semester, you're not waiting in, so when it ends in January, you're not waiting till June to take the exam.
Yeah.
So we, the, last year was the first year that they operated in February as well. So the hope would be that we would see some difference there. The long and short of, of your question is, should we be looking at are we, are we assessing our students at the right grade level, in the right subject area? I think we have enough data over the last seventeen years.
And I get your point. I understand. Hey, look, we're looking at the, the evaluated, the evaluation type points that they've got. Bio's got a lot, physics doesn't have as many. On that analysis al- alone, that's great. But there's more to it. Do they, do they, are they, they may be able to do, I mean, I guess the that's combined physics and bio. How does that even get combined?
That doesn't really matter. That's just how they're recording. And, and really, we have, most of our students partially meeting, they continue to, you know, having taken it in ninth grade, anyone who's not successful can do bio in tenth grade. And if you were not successful on those two tests, you could do chemistry in eleventh grade if you were following that sequence. So they do have opportunities to to take a different test, and they could do the bio if they took the bio.
All right, so here's my question now. Because bio really is gonna be independent, whether they're in ninth grade or tenth grade, it's a very different subject.
Yeah.
So when they So when they, if they're not doing well in the physics, the ones that do that, that go to bio, are they testing better in bio?
Yes. Well, no, because because they've the ones who are taking or who are likely to take bio have, it's a very small percentage.
Understood. I don't, I I'm, I'm just wondering whether the ones that are struggling in physics, if they go and take bio, if they're getting better results, that's almost supporting my my question of whether we're doing this or whether they're taking the right classes.
Some do, some don't. Some end up going to the third.
Okay.
That this is needs to be what the next step.
That's why I do, I'm just gonna just say, I've already spoken to Mr. Tremel about it when the data came in and I just asked him his opinion because it was made based on, you know, the what he just said about the.
Another fact that we looked at too is that we were testing 10th grade students all spring. And another, another factor that we took into consideration was by moving into ninth grade, we were having students take one MCAS test versus three MCAS tests. So there was, I mean, there was a lot of of thought and research and planning around it and and over the last seven years that we've done it, there have been significant pickups in it that that have presented, when do we do it?
If you're not gonna see change like this, if if this is the next step and we need to do item analysis to figure out where we're falling down. It's gonna, that right, that's curriculum adjustment, right? And and that that takes a good three years to see a a data response. So you're not gonna get instantaneous results, but that needs to be the next step in terms of, okay, what what what's going on here?
And when we start to talk about the strategic plan, one of our initiatives that we're in the second year of is the curriculum, science curriculum. So we have, we have a new science curriculum and we are working, we're the the high school version of of it is not fully out, but some units are, and our science teachers are are working on those units. So we are, as far as that piece goes, we are in the process of addressing these.
So the, I just want to make sure I understand. So they need a student, needs to pass either a physics MCAS or a bio MCAS. Is that correct?
Or a.
Or a CAF. Okay.
They just need to pass one of them.
Okay. So what we've historically done is we've had them do bio because we had them start in ninth grade and they did bio in ninth grade and then they did their MCAS with bio. We've switched that up. Where now we get them to do physics first. And most of them are taking the physics one and if they pass, great. If they don't, they've got an option to take it again or take bio. If if we start looking at this, I'm just worried, I mean, physics is a lot of math. And if they don't have a good base in that, it's it's gonna give them a problem. Could you still do the same thing by flipping it around?
We would hope that by by building our math or building that, you know, like not separating out, like we were saying that our students are achieving math. We wanna see them applying those math skills across content. So looking at math and if we're, if we're thinking that physics is a problem because of math, we need to be looking at math and physics, but we haven't necessarily identified that the math.
If you haven't done the analysis, not the ones that are below.
So what's your question? Could you do bio in ninth and physics in 10th without?
And and I'm just one, cause it's a lot of these do build upon each other and especially on the physics side. It might be to, I guess, here's another question. We like to look at other districts in the area. We like to look at other, but what what are, are we doing what everybody else is doing or a lot of schools still doing bio in ninth grade and physics in town?
I don't know what. A lot of, most schools are doing bio as their science and best.
But they're doing it in town.
But they're doing it in town.
Okay. But are they doing physics? Oh, okay. So they could still take physics, but they're not using that as their as their MCAS test.
As their primary. Okay. So I will, we'll go to a so the next series of slides, I'm not gonna speak about each of them, but I included slides 11 through 16 if you just kind of scroll through those. So you can, you can dive into them on your own if you would like. But they were included to show some historical data over since 2019 at each grade level. And I believe the middle school data goes back to 2018. It just, this was a report that was generated. But it shows the little blip and up and down, but the overall consistency over time. That SRS, this is where we're performing pre and post pandemic, but also through the pandemic. And I think that is a testament to our initiatives that was done and that we, we didn't have see a significant drop or we didn't see a significant rise, but we also didn't see a significant drop. With our grade level, something really concerning what we're talking about, large learning loss or gaps, we were able to maintain pretty relatively steadily through the pandemic. But if we jump ahead to the ELA 10th grade pre.
I'm sure remember, 2019, that was an MCAS 2.0 next gen, was it?
Middle, yes, we were.
In 10th grade.
But now, yes. We're doing it on the computer.
But that was the next generation?
Yeah. We were, we've been doing it for a long time. So here is the pre and post data for ELA 10th grade. We have more exceeding and the same not meeting, that's another, the same. If you wanna go back to math, pre and post, we have more exceeding. The meeting and partially meeting, that's where we're slipping in and out. We've shifted some students from, or students have moved from higher numbers in meeting to higher numbers in partially meeting. So we
What's, so what's considered a significant change? Cause to me, a 17% drop would be a significant change, but you were saying that in math, we didn't see a significant decline.
In which category?
If we look at meeting expectations prior to, we were at 58. Now we're at 41. That's a 17% drop, right?
Right. So overall, so overall in meeting and partially meeting expectations, we would put that in a similar category because those students all, and within partially meeting, this is where it gets a little wonky.
Okay.
In partially meeting, students meet competency depending on the the score they get within that. They receive competency determination, meaning the diploma, the new diploma, depending on the number.
Oh, so the cutoff is in the orange.
It's in orange. It's not. It's in the yellow.
Oh, yeah.
So what, the the caveat is that we put some, they have, in the partially meeting, they would have to continue to take specific courses for the remainder of high school to to get that. So if your score is within a certain number and for different tests and different graduation years, it's different because of the pandemic. So I I can't give you those numbers right off the top of my head. So, yes, when we look at this and, but when we lump it together in terms of students meeting and exceeding or or partially meeting or not meeting, or the numbers of students we have that need to continue to retest to get competency determination, we have not had a significant change.
Okay, so so let's go back one further. What's considered a significant change? What percent, what percentage difference? Less than five, less than 10?
Top five.
Okay, so then in between there, so we're having more of our 44 that are partially meeting, that are at the higher end of that that are considered, okay, they passed so that they can graduate compared to where we were in 19. So when you add those groups together, it's less than 5% difference. But if we just look at meeting expectations, we do have a 17% drop.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that would be a significant change.
That would be a significant change and we need to shift those students who are, I think what you recall on the bubble, back into, back into the meeting expectations. In math.
Right, ELA, I mean, it was 48, 48, so.
Grade. So here we have more students exceeding, but we also have more not meeting. We're exactly the same compared to, we're we're with the state, what we are mentioning that we're with the state. Again, in that partially meeting, we have more partially meeting than we would play. And math, we have more exceeding, we're the same not meeting. And again, we're in that, the meeting and partially meeting. And obviously that 2019, we were at 15 and partially meeting, we've actually increased more. So we really need to think about how we're addressing this partially meeting situation.
You also have to keep in mind that these are two separate cohorts of kids.
I know, yeah.
You know, and the cohort of kids makes a difference in your data.
And then we have seven, which is where there's the most discrepancy. And so this cohort, as I mentioned, when we're talking about accountability, this is a totally different group of students than so when we're talking about our 10th grade students who've been in our school through this. Here we're looking at students who, and these, this this school, these scores aren't part of our accountability overall. But we need to be addressing them because next year they're, as they score.
But these are the kids that went through COVID at a younger age, therefore they probably get impacted more.
Right, okay, definitely.
So these would be the current seniors.
Yeah.
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 So looking at some of our AP data. And I remember in the spring, you could ask for some data around, you know, we did make some eight, some changes to our programming last year. Where in some courses, we we wrote three levels of course offering, went to two levels of course offering. So if there is an AP offering, we removed honors level. And then we took the lowest level, the college prep level and made a grade level. So English, for example, in 11 and 12 is grade level English or advanced level student. And on if you're a honors student and you wanna challenge yourself, AP is the option. If if that's not what they're interested in doing, then the grade level option is a risk option as well, at grade level expectation. So we did that in in three content areas, bio, biology, chemistry and English language literature. So this is a four, this goes back to 2019 in terms of our AP scores. 2020 is the year that was the year that all AP students took those tests at home. So you see a spike in the data there. I think you have to take that with some consideration.
2020 was open book?
Yes.
So we're not, you know, you know, we don't wanna dis- dis- dismiss.
That would be a variance that you, that you exclude from the study.
Yeah. But what's, what's really exciting here is we had, we we had, we took 121 AP exams. Of those 43 students, so not necessarily tests, but 43 students earn scores of three or higher. And that's 51% of total AP students scoring three or higher. And I know you're gonna look back to 2022 and you're gonna say, well, 57% in 2022. We we gave more tests, but also three or higher is passing. So there's three fours and fives. In 2022, of that 57% or of those numbers, 10s, 10 scores were four and eight scores were five. So there were a total of 18 scores that were above three. This in 2023 data, 22 scores were four and 21 were five. So we have 43 that were above three. So if you flip to the next slide, I'm gonna highlight, so what's significant, so the AP recognizes AP scholars, students earning fours and fives, students earning fours and fives or threes, fours and fives across multiple tests. Here's a breakdown of AP scholar, AP scholar with honor, AP scholar with distinction. Next week at the NHS induction, we are gonna recognize six South Atlantic Regional School students as AP scholars. Four of them will be AP scholars with honors. So that is something to very, very much celebrate.
I have a question before you go on. Refresh my memory. When we made that switch with you know, CP or AP, are the kids that taking the AP courses, are they required to take the AP test? Okay.
At this point in time.
And that was the one that we had all the questions on, because it's also interesting, if you go back to the definition of your AP scholar and your AP with distinction, it clearly indicates average of tests taken.
Yeah.
And everything that we've heard from students is that if they do wanna push themselves and they've got four or five AP classes that they're taking, they're bailing on a couple of them. Cause they're concentrating on the two or three that they really wanna do well on so that they can maybe get the class credited in college. Because now more and more of the colleges are requiring a four or five in order to get the class credited. Have we, is there been any discussion about whether we put this up as an option for the kids to take the test or not?
So there's been, you were part of that group that we had this discussion, weren't you? There, there has, there has been discussion and it goes back and forth for all kinds of reasons, why to or why not to. Where we're focusing is creating a stronger culture of doing well on the test for the test sake or for your achievement as a student's sake, not because of what I'm gonna get in terms of reward as a result of it. Of the 29 students in eight, I'm sorry, not 29. We had 22, I believe, of 29 students in AP Lang getting three or better. And we have, now I'm gonna need to remember this number. Almost all, not all, but pretty close to all of the students who took AP Lang have elected to continue on to AP literature. And that is significant as well. They're making that choice to challenge themselves and that's numbers that I think last year we had three in AP AP literature or or going into this, we had three that were interested in AP literature and now we're, we're able to run two full sections of it. So that is another, that's a push in terms of the culture, a push in terms of the belief that I can, and the data showing that they can do it. So you're looking at going from two threes in 2021 to eight threes in 2023. Four to seven in the four score and one five in 2021, seven fives in in 2023. And this is our, this is first year data. So we need to like keep building on this and working on this. But I wanted to highlight the English language composition because there's very clearly in terms of the numbers. The reason there's no 22, 20, 22 data is because we offer, at the time we were offering it out to the users, the Lang. So.
Are we still doing it?
This year we are not because we have enough students to to run multiple sections. And we're, we're running multiple sections of both courses. So so that's a good, and the the reporting from students is is very positive. Very positive in terms of what the experience is.
We love Mr. Sir.
And the rigor.
So I've heard, right?
So, so lots of positive things about the, about the AP. So and like I said, we're in the beginnings of making some shifts in terms of raising the bar for students in terms of rigor and and shifting our culture around what they can do. That's how.
Those mean scores don't impact us in any way in the district, do they? They're lower or higher. Okay.
So after looking at or talking about all that data, but you know, and looking at our our site strategic plan or what SRS is doing to address some of these things or to continue to you know, in some areas we're, we've been maintaining, we think that's great, where we're maintaining, we're now looking to improve. And areas where we were, we haven't maintained or we have some work to do and we're, we're also looking to improve. But we believe that these, that our initiatives are and the commitment to our initiatives is a huge part of of our performance. So many of the things on our strategic plan are the same or continuations of what we've done in recent years. But what is new or what is focused now within diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging? We will be exploring the development of alternative scheduling models, how we're scheduling students, how we're scheduling courses. And what the day to day schedule looks like to to involve these of our students. And that's where some of the conversations we just had around science might come. That's where any changes to our program will come. That will, that will take probably two years, but we're in the process of that. Our counseling department Our counseling department um in, in, this is sort of came from a conversation in part of the gold initiative. And the connection to self-esteem, but talking about uh behaviors particularly in the middle school and what the needs are. And what those behaviors in the connection to self-esteem might be. Um so we are looking at and building into this year uh tier one self-esteem programming support. So at a, a tier one intervention, whether the counseling department will be implementing a focus on self-esteem building. And from there, we can identify students who might need tier two support or greater support. Um that we could offer in sort of a small group, but it's gonna start as school uh grade wide, uh grade level wide implementation.
What does that look like? Like where in the school day does that fit?
So uh in our current model, lots of our uh social emotional learning pieces or our school um. Guidance pieces relative to like uh planning courses or thinking about going to vocational support, all those things. They happen in a class that all the students have, uh sometimes it's social studies. So once a week for X amount of weeks, the counselors will go and take a social studies class and deliver the lessons. Uh it could be an English class depending, um it's almost never a math class. Um but one of the classes, if we're doing multiple initiatives, it'll be one class for this thing and one class for another. Yeah, so that's how we work it in. Um but when we're talking about exploring scheduling models, that's a, that's a parameter, that's a priority to consider. How are we, how and where are we delivering these things without competing with other things? So that, that will be part of the conversation. So in terms of the counseling department, this is initiative they're working on and their, uh their goal this year is, is focused centered around this. So it's not in place that um they're working on it. Um in terms of guaranteed and viable curriculum, uh we're still working to define our multi-tiered system of support and expanding. Um some of those tier two interventions. Uh and that will come, part of that will come from this, this tier one program, uh self-esteem. So we have a menu of services or a, a menu of interventions that we have relative to social emotional learning. That our counselors are experienced with and that we can offer. We want to continue to grow that based on what the needs presenting from our students are. So that's a continuing piece. Uh our Hershberg Behavioral Health, uh our counselors are focused on um also uh refining their intervention planning and development. So building concrete plans with evidence-based uh research, uh research-based um. Uh interventions, not just, oh, this seems like a good idea, we're, we're working from a place of, of things that are research-based. Um our new curriculum, Open Sia um for the science department. Uh the, the, the middle school is in the process of implementation. The high school is in the process of piloting and looking at available units for our high school courses. Uh our high quality instructional, uh material selection process, English language arts is in latter phases. We've narrowed it to two curriculums that uh that are also being, in quarter two, we'll, we'll do some field testing. And PE health is in the beginning, the beginnings of from having new standards. As you all know, uh Sullivan is initiating that process, which our, which our teachers are very much a part of. Um in terms of struc- instructional technology, um the new piece. Um and exactly what this looks like is our, our teacher goals are a component of the, is, is focused on utilizing artificial intelligence. Um for what the teachers are doing. And through that work, uh the teachers can gain some experience using it relative to um education. So that as we move forward with conversations of how this impacts student learning. They have experience with what it can do, can't do, where we need to put um. Not what it can and can't do, but how we can use it to inform instruction, how we use it to um make our students prepared for the world that they're in. But the, the idea being that we can't really um be part of that conversation until we have the experience. So their goals of the, their goals around their, their lesson planning and social emotional learning. They're utilizing AI as a tool to do that, so to build their expertise. So it might take thirty seconds to generate a lesson plan, but then they have to bet some things about it and find it. So far, some people are having a lot of fun with it and interestingly, getting a lot of really engaging ideas. And, and things, it's breathing new life into some things that people are doing. So um again, that's in its infancy, it's, it's something we're just starting. Um and, and uh Superintendent Willard had spoken to us over the summer about bringing AI into the classroom. But before we do that, we need to as, as um, I wouldn't say wholly before, but at least a little bit before, have some sense of how and why we'll do that.
So do you have common building-wise markers?
Yes.
Okay, can you translate that?
Uh student, currently the student learning goals are, are by department. And the professional practice goal is across the board.
Okay.
Um while there are some outliers for a variety of reasons.
Right. So this AI one falls under the professional practice and it's building wide?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so and in, and that's a way that we can move forward together, instead of having a couple of people doing not a couple of people. And then we've got, um these bigger initiatives or these bigger things we'd like to do together.
Yes, no, I, I commend you, I think that is amazing to move everybody together in the same direction and, and, and making the ships work. I think that is very impressive.
When you're, when they're doing the, the lesson plan development using AI. A lot, a lot of the, the stuff coming out now is that they're, they're. Some of this stuff is biased, because it depends on who's creating the AI. Are we keeping an eye on that to make sure that we're not just, I know they're creating lesson plan, they're, you know what you mean? I want to be very careful.
Yeah.
That we're not just relinquishing our lesson plans to the AI and it comes out and says, well, we want to do this and we want to talk about this. I think certain subjects are gonna be easier. You start getting into science, political science, stuff like that, I think that you've got to be very careful with just taking what an AI says. Is it subject matter.
Precisely why we're doing this.
Which is precisely why we're doing this, this is, this is the learning. And so if you think about it as AI is generating a draft for you.
Yeah.
And then what are you doing with that? You need to use your professional expertise to the elements and, but we've talked about AI lies. And, and what you can.
You do the same search day one and do it again two days later and it's.
But I mean, but I think we can.
And the things you can explore and the things you can't, you should, the things that it works for and the things that it, it doesn't work for. So the teachers are through, are going through this experience to learn those things as they go.
Okay, but we also know human nature is that there are gonna be some people that may not go through that same rigor. To dump check it, they may just take it and go and move on.
Well, they're submitting these as part of that.
Okay.
There's, they're submitting these as part of the, the goal, the professional practice goal is, is a, is a learning piece for educators. How am I growing my practice?
We have to document everything.
So they have to document things and this is part of.
So there's. Okay.
Yeah, and there's co- and there's, as it says in here, there's coaching, there, the P L sees me once a month where everybody shares their lesson plans. And talk about what worked and what didn't. Um in the opening days of school, uh we did one as a staff. Just a, a, a common text, we used the three little pigs. And everyone went and developed a lesson through, you know, using that as the main core text. It was really exciting to see different content and how, and you have to tell how rigorous to make, you have to give the grade level. It was, it was fascinating and I think that hurt people and now they want to see how they can make it work for them. But there, at the end of the day, their expertise is what is taking that draft and deciding what's in, what's out. So it's, it's simply a tool.
Okay.
It's simply a tool, it's not the end-all. And hopefully, or the goal, the ultimate goal being that that informs their practice in a way that allows them to then bring it to the classroom students.
It's just another resource.
Yeah, absolutely, students need. Absolutely, too.
Right, no.
Exactly. Um and then our last um place relative to engaged learning is um, you know, we are using our data to adjust our practice. Or on continually uh innovative career pathways um is the engagement relative to school to career. And as you know, that was. I see this school last year and we are working on that. And as you also know, we received a grant to do some additional work, so that's a focus this year. And then the building thinking, thinking classrooms is, is what the math department is, is focusing on uh for the time being. And it's, it's uh, it's a heavily research-based um. Program, it's not a program or it's, they did a book study this summer and it's about how to deliver um. Heather Gaji, it's how to, it's how to deliver instruction and how to structure your classroom. And what I can say is it is highly, highly engaging in, in a very noticeable way. And walking through our math department, um you can see, just you don't even have to actually enter the room, you can walk by the hall and you know the classroom's where it's going on. Students are up, they're moving collaboratively, there's, have you been in the math class where that's doing this? We have the whiteboards around the room and he's working.
Yeah.
Okay, um so the feedback is very positive and the math department um is, is fully engaged with it and built on that. So that's something that we're working on.
Is that seven twelve or is?
Seven twelve. But these are our, those are the new things um that are linked to maybe older things, but that we have not really. We have a lot, we have a lot going on, we try to always bring it back to the stuff, but we're, we're getting to a place where we're branching out more and more and becoming more departments.
Good.
All right.
How's your, just while we've got you here.
Yes.
What's your initial feedback been on your yonder bags for your seven and eight? Cause I know your letter went out and everybody.
So the letter went out, I did not hear anything, I have not heard anything back. Uh we are waiting, uh we are waiting for um. Uh yonder, we're waiting for their rep to give us a date where they're gonna come out and show us, but we're still shooting for that November sixth rollout. Um and we have quite a few incidents this week where we've said.
Where are those?
Um today and today.
Yeah, so. Can't happen soon enough, right?
Yeah, so um and, and, and you know. So.
They going yet?
So the vape sensors, um we are, we are in, we have the technology, we did a training. And now we're live and what we discovered is the dashboard that we see as administrators is not the dashboard we saw in the training. We, we have to set it up.
We have to, we have to, so what you can see now is you see everything, you haven't, you need to label. The vape sensors, but you know what, what, what is, what is where. That guy called me today, he's like, I am looking at this dashboard and it's like blowing up. Um so actually, you sent me a, an email to Ms. Shorter. Uh Chris Parent wants to go into, needs to go into the bathroom and, and hook something up. You gotta be, you hit a button, you label it sensor cafeteria hallway or whatever.
So that way you know.
Well, we have two half days in the next two days, so he's gonna do that Thursday, Friday. Right?
He probably needs to, yeah.
You don't know where the violators are, you just know somebody.
Somebody's throwing that phone right at him.
So hopefully none of the students are watching this right now.
Okay, it's gonna be working.
The other.
It's working.
Well, the other piece that is not set, the other piece that is not set is the thresholds. So they could be going off like crazy because the threshold is set. So we have to find the normalized threshold and we also have to set what they are.
Measuring.
Measuring, because air quality is just one of the things they measure. They measure sound, they measure tampering, they measure, there's a whole bunch of stuff that it's gonna tell us besides just.
What?
Well, so we have to set that.
The twelve grades that caught for big baby, we don't.
Right.
So we're moving forward, we're not quite there yet, that's where that was, so. So lots of exciting things that the mission.
But basically Lucas, no more baby, okay? Al- 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 tried or afraid, no promises.
Um I'm, I, I will just, since we're talking about bathing, I, I don't know if Netflix has another documentary series um called Big Dave. And I watched it this weekend, it was, it was very interesting, very telling about why we had this spike. From twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen in bathing. Um and what the real problem is, is that Juul made nicotine so much more addictive. And now you have all.
It's so acceptable.
Right, that was the campaign that got everyone to try it. But then, then when they tried it, it was so much more addictive because of the delivery. So if you have an opportunity, I would actually.
Good, thank you very much. All right. Policies. Yes, these days, moving policy. Uh all right, Superintendent, action items.
Move to approve consent agenda items as listed above, recommend. So.
Can I get a show of hands to approve the consent agenda? Aaron, look, record shows the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the Potter Mills School site strategic plan for the twenty three, twenty four academic school year, recommended, so.
Questions on this? Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Aaron, let's record show the motion passes seven zero zero one. Yeah, I gotta at least try. All right, Superintendent, you got a report for us tonight?
I do, I just have a, a quick one, I just got um some information yesterday in the mail, email um about rural aid. This is the one that I've been telling everybody what we need to advocate for, because we're not going to get money through the chapter seventy or the SLA, it's just not coming our way. So rural school aid started a few years ago, um the rural school coalition is really starting to build and gain momentum across the state. Um last year, we were awarded a hundred and forty three thousand dollars when all was said and done with rural school aid. Um this, we just found out yesterday that after it went through all like the House and the Senate and back to the governor's budget. Where it was approved from and we received three hundred eighty five thousand dollars this year in rural school aid. That is significant money, that's real money. Um we already have, well, we're gonna hold, huh, when, keep my finger on it, but um. Plan on getting it, money similar to that for next school year, because that will help really offset a lot of what we were wondering was gonna be the S R Q. When we had those positions that we needed to fill, what, what we're gonna do. Um so that is some really good news and if anybody is listening, what can they do to help with the budget? It's really contacted legislative um and your representatives and really push rural aid um. It was minimally funded, it's getting, it's still minimally funded, it's not where they want it, but it was fifteen million and they'd like to see it at about sixty million. So if that's it at fifteen million, it can be a real huge.
One twenty-three million.
It'd be a huge offset um to our budget and to our towns.
So what did we budget last year?
One ten.
So the budget that we signed and passed, the towns approved.
Mm-hmm.
It was only in at one ten.
Hmm.
So in our reality, we got three eighty-five.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's how we keep our E and D.
No, no, so that would go right into E and D then, right?
Yes.
Great.
And school choice, which is how we offset the budget.
Yep.
That's how we.
No, but that's great.
With both E and D and school choice, but I think when something like that happens. It helps with special ed out of district that we're not anticipating throughout the course of the year and.
That increase from what we budgeted to what that number is, is more than what the discretionary amount was that went to the town.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I never would have dreamed.
No, no, you know what I mean, so essentially, we took a zero increase budget to the town. They, they improved that there was an increase on there, but with that additional money, which is gonna go into E and D this year.
Hmm.
There, there essentially was not, there was no, there was no discretionary amount at all.
Well, this will go back to the town.
No, that's great, absolutely.
Except E and D's next year. But the great thing is, if this is the pattern that we're seeing and being part of, if, even if it stays here.
Right, that's good.
This helps us tremendously next year with looking at those four positions. Um the special ed and the five oh four coordinator and how we're gonna fund them immediately.
Yep.
So Joe and I were talking about that already today, but that is some really good news, so. That's why.
You keep coming, you've got news like that, you can. Okay, Joe, you got, can you follow up with an extra two hundred grand?
I shared that with you, so you would have all that.
She stole your, she stole your report, right?
Pictures on the website. And I'm gonna talk about underground tanks. Um so you have some progress on that, which is, which is, which is great, because I know it is, is something that is, is sensitive. We want to uh get it taken care of quickly. We, we received our scope of work from High Bond, um which is important because it outlines exactly what needs to be done. And so we have a. Exactly what needs to be done and so we have a a contract, or not a contract, we have a document that we can give to all. Um bidders, that's consistent, and so Eric Whitehander has reached out to, we need to get three. Three quotes, Eric has already reached out to to uh three companies to get those quotes. So we hope to have um awarded a contract in the next couple of weeks here and hopefully. Begin to break ground and get this reworked, um so I'm appreciative to Pyeongbwan. Who got this, this scope of work to us and we were able to get it out to to the bidders. Um our technology project is posted, um we have received one RFD, request for proposal, we haven't opened it yet. And that will end uh Thursday, November third, so Thursday second, uh but that Thursday, so we will begin uh. Second, yeah, so we will award that uh shortly after and begin with our technology project as well, so. I'm appreciative of Garland for his patience at work on this, it's taken us a little, a little bit of a learning curve and some some um. Patience with with kind of restructuring his department, but we feel we have a good, put out a good proposal. For um for vendors to to uh propose on and to get a good plan waiting for, so I'm excited to get that going and we are in that. Phase where we have three fiscal years kind of going, um closing out fiscal year twenty-three, the end of the year report will be due in in a couple of weeks and. Um we look in in very healthy shape from FY twenty-three, we obviously are working in FY twenty-four and Superintendent Willard and myself have been. You know, getting some projections around what FY twenty-five looks like and and preparing uh. Out of district costs, uh vocational costs, looking at that and the percentages and and hopefully being uh. Well-prepared for the roundtable meeting in a couple of weeks here, right?
Yeah.
End of November that.
Well, we have to push it to the first week of December, because I was, Aaron sent another email back out, they're looking to get a couple of dates. The sixth or the seventh, right, Aaron, yeah, the sixth or seventh of December, we're looking right now, hopefully they'll. Be able to pick one of those.
So we'll be ready for that, um we'll be with the town. Uh Jessica Cody is has been named the interim accountant for the district, um. She's doing about a job and a half right now with accounting and accounts payable, but she's doing trans job, she will be fantastic for for us in the district. And Karen Parker has been appointed as the accounts payable uh person, thinking just like, um so she's moving from. Secretaryal position at Powder Mill into this role. So we're transitioning her a little bit, she's doing the mornings still down here uh at Powder Mill and then working with Jess in the afternoons and all that job is posted.
So once that's done, we will have full contact with the people, right?
We got it.
There we go. Awesome, thank you very much. All right, uh subcommittees, negotiations, I'm assuming nothing still, right?
We are, um Betsy should be reaching out to you, we're going to start setting up meetings with um Estadio and um hair professionals. So she'll reach out to you probably tomorrow.
And there still is, just to throw it there, there still is an open spot on that committee, anybody would like to go into negotiations, you probably know. Um finance, uh we have a meeting Thursday morning, right?
Thursday morning, uh food services, the agenda.
Yep. Um LP back.
Tomorrow.
Awesome, I got one in a couple of weeks, we were supposed to have one last week, but they're waiting to.
It's not recent, it's Thursday morning, food service. Right, right, you thought we said.
I think I said Thursday, I think it was tomorrow. Um Corporation, I had a meeting set up last week, they canceled, they're pushing it into November. Find it or something else. Um policy, our first meeting is, right, I know it's coming. Buildings and grounds, we're waiting to lock in a meeting with our consultant, any?
Yeah, I haven't heard from him.
I don't know, he picks up from here and I, like, if he doesn't get back to you by the end of the week, let me know and I'll call. Um I L T.
Gave you an update last.
Yep. Good, wellness. Uh Sven.
Yes, we actually met today.
Oh.
Um and Erica and I met with Superintendent Willard, Robbie Dunn and Mr. Trump. Um and basically, we were just kind of given the big picture of um our substantially separate programs here in the district. Because, as you know, the cost of those programs has gone up. Um and so we basically went through um the the types of programs that students are leaving the district for. As well as the types of in-house separately, um separate programs that we have, um and we have a total of. Um forty-five students that we keep in district in our substantially separate programs, which is very important. Um and then twelve that we send out of district, um and those twelve are, you know, I mean, that's that's expensive. Um but it was clear to me that um Robin and and everyone is really um on top of those those students, they have very specific needs. And they are attending very specific programs that that we can't service here. So it's important for us to know going into budget season, um that we need to continue to fund these in-house programs. Um because uh sending them out of um out of district is very, it's very.
I'm assuming, that's a seventy-five percent number that we're keeping in-house. If that, I'm assuming, is that a good number compared to other districts?
Yeah.
Is there any data out there that we should, because that might be, I'm just saying, that might be good data to have for the presentation.
We do the very best we can under, in every way.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, this hands are not from a budget present presentation perspective, if we, if.
Right, right.
Percentage of out-of-district placements?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Percentage of students that are in out-of-district placements?
No, I want, what I want to know is, if you look at what we've got, we've got, let's say, sixty, it's around sixty students, right? That are in substantially separate programs.
Yeah, but 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 you're not comparing apples to apples, because every district ha- has different substantially separate programs, if they have any in-house substantially separate programs. So basically, what we've done to our credit is we have created these these programs in-house.
Would would other districts know the number of kids that they keep in district as opposed to sending them out of district?
And then keep in mind that. You know, this is different from your, the number that we're including in the post-prints as well.
Right, but I'm, I I'm looking at it from a financial perspective, because you already identified.
An autism program at James Clark One Elementary School, but they have a different program at a different elementary school, so it might be difficult to do like apples.
Well, no, well, yeah, but if you look at the overall students that are included in these programs and you just look at a straight base number. It's okay, we've got fifty students that were doing in-house and we've got fifty that are going out of district, they're they're taking care of fifty percent of their kids in their district. We're taking care of seventy-five percent of our kids in our district.
Yeah, it's worth looking to see that.
I would bet that when we get to a budget proposal and they start looking at their costs, that.
We don't have the kids that we could give enough space for. The number.
Still doesn't change the amount of kids that you're putting care of.
I don't like to say we might use more.
What we look at is.
Make room for those kids that we just don't have the space for the said program, so they get a work rate and you know what I mean?
We need to.
Yeah, I mean, that goes to sort of the next step.
That does change your.
Where if we know how many kids we're taking care of, what are the opportunities for us to be able to take care of more if one of the limitations is space? Is that something that we can address?
I don't know, so.
I mean, if it isn't, it isn't, if it is. I'm just thinking that if somebody in the town says, okay, you're not doing enough.
Yeah, I I.
Compared to everybody in the other areas, we're doing a lot more than they are and every kid that has to go out will cost us more money.
But it changes every year too, so like, since we need to create another special education program in Powder Mill, correct? From the kids who are going to be leaving.
Right, right.
And how did that work, where we can keep them in district sometimes, but that they don't have a peer group to?
Some, some are based on.
Yeah.
We have programs, we don't have enough students in the program, so there's not an established peer group, so.
Right.
That that can be negotiated as well.
Yeah. But it, those are all moving pieces and I think that's going to be too hard to try and keep all of those. I was just astounded at how expensive it is and how diverse the different special educations are for each of the twelve students that we're sending out of district. And the amount of money that we're paying for them is ashtray um for the percentage of children that we're sending. There's always so many places you could put them, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then there's different, so within each category, there's different levels of severity, you know, that that children can have, so then they can go to this institute. But this person who's, you know, going to need that, right, can't go to that, except, so then you have someone someplace else.
Another thing to advocate for, uh legislative.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Transportation reimbursement.
And and they just started including transportation and circuit breaker and they funded it at fifty-seven percent, so that would be another thing to advocate for. I forgot my purse over there, my notes are in my.
All right, technology, get an update, do we have a meeting? Okay. Council committee, nothing going on right now, right?
Right.
Uh master plan, they're in the middle of wrapping up, I think the final version of the first step. I saw emails floating around, um finalizing that up. Athletics, we need to set up a meeting.
Both of the season?
Yeah. Uh and then Pam's going to Kate in a couple of weeks. Awesome. All right, we have nobody here for public comment, so we're going to move through that. Um old business, got a budget roundtable date, twentieth, thirtieth is not going to work. Fortunately for the town, so we, as I said earlier, we sent down an email for the sixth and the seventh, hopefully that'll work. Um new business, right, twelve five moved to twelve four because of the special economy, besides. And we got anything else for new business? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Show of hands in turn. Aaron, with the record show, the motion passes seven zero zero and Lucas and Lucas. Everybody have a great evening. You can see the hands fly out.